I think the phone-in number for the meeting. We apologize for the delay. We will be starting in about two minutes. Thank you. I had everybody for a quick second. This is what happens when you take a little, a month off. Hey, member Higgins, member Wilson. I think we're ready. So, good evening. Again, I apologize for, for the late start. Just so much to catch up on. Today is Tuesday, August 1st, and welcome to our first board meeting of the 23-24 school year. Board members present, so I'd like to call our meeting to order. The following board members are present in the boardroom. Members Wilson, Lessons, Jacobs, Holloman, Higgins, and Bellamy. Member Donnelly is, has joined us by, by telephone. And we also have our student, Josh is with us. Josh Pack is with us tonight, along with our superintendent, and several of our amazing senior staff. With that, I will turn it over to Josh for our pledge and then the land acknowledgement. Whenever you're ready, Josh.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Whenever you're ready with the land acknowledgement.
We acknowledge that we gather here today on the traditional lands of the Denina people of the Upper Cook Inlet. For thousands of years, the Denina people have been and continue to be the stewards of this land. ASD is committed to diversity and inclusion, and it is with honor and respect that we recognize all Indigenous people who live and learn in our community.
Thank you very much, Jeff. All right, so we'd like to welcome everyone for being here today, and thank you for supporting the work of the Anchorage School Board, the district, and this board. And that's, that thanks goes out to our students, our parents, our teachers, our staff, our school business partners, and the entire community. We thank you for your investment in our district with your time, your talents, and your tax dollars. That brings us to item three on the agenda, which is the approval of the agenda.
Madam President, I move to approve the agenda as written. Second.
Moved in second to approve the agenda as written. Is there any opposition to approves, approving, approving the agenda as written? Hearing and seeing no opposition, the agenda is approved. Moving on to item B. Josh, do you have a report for us today? Thank you. You're up.
Hello, everyone. I'm Joshua Pack. I am the elected student advisory board president for this school year, and I'm very excited to be here. I just came back from attending the National Federation of High Schools Student Leadership Conference from Indianapolis, and I am experiencing a bit of jet lag today, but I'm very excited to be here. And I attended it as a part of the Alaska Association of Student Governments, or ASOG, and we were sponsored by ASOG, or the Alaska Association, Alaska Student Activities Association, and I'm very thankful for them. Three out of the four delegates that attended this conference from Alaska were ASD students, so we had a lot of ASD representation. And at this conference, we got to learn about the essentials of leadership, and we got to network with student leaders and athletes across the nation. That was very inspiring. And we got to volunteer with the United Sports Organization to help include disabled athletes in our sports organizations to promote diversity and inclusion. And at this conference, I met a lot of energized and high-spirited leaders and students across this nation doing wonderful things. So that has rejuvenated me for this upcoming, upcoming school year. In regards to the student advisory board, our first meeting will be held on September 12th, 2023. And at SAB, we meet in monthly meetings in this room to unite representatives from both high schools and middle schools in ASD. And in our meetings, we discuss and debate resolutions, provide an avenue for students to advocate and amplify their voices for concerns, and we work towards a collaborative and empowered school district. I look forward to working with my fellow elected officials, school members, staff, and representatives for another great school year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for, for Josh? All right. Thank you, and thank you for representing us well. Where did you go?
Indianapolis.
Indianapolis. Okay. Awesome. That's great. And the next SAB meeting is September 12th. And what time is that? Do we know, have a time?
It will be 8:15 to 10:15 a.m.
Okay, in this room.
Yes.
All right. Amazing. Thank you. And we're moving on now to item C. Our goal monitoring will resume in September, so we will, and, and that'll be the normal rotation of first meeting, we would get a monitoring report. Second meeting, we will discuss that report. Moving on to our public comment portion. I have just a few comments. Now is the time for us to hear from our public. We welcome your comments, which are very important to us. The board has set aside an hour at the beginning of this, of its meetings, and that's at this meeting and every meeting, for those who have signed up to give public comment. Those not heard during the first hour of public comment will be heard at the end of the agenda. This is an opportunity for board members to listen and for members of the public to inform the board of their views. Please note the following. All public comments are limited to three minutes. Speaking time may not be shared with others. When your name is called, please come to the podium, or if you are online, state your name and direct your comments to the chair. Please understand that this is not a time for dialogue. The purpose of this agenda item is for you, the public, to inform us, the school board, about your views. If you have handouts that you would like to share, please give them to the executive assistant, Ms. Foster, to my left, to my left, you're right, of course. And she will make sure that all board members receive them. Finally, I'd like to call your attention to the decorum, audience participation, and rules of decorum for our boardroom. It's a one-page handout that's available when you enter the boardroom. And it actually, you know, it, it just describes the decorum that we, that is necessary for us to do business, as, as well as have a safe and inviting environment. So please review those rules. They, the audience participation rules I've already gone over. The rules, other rules would include speakers may point out what he or she believes to be a natural consequence of a board action, but may not engage in speech that personally attacks others. We ask that you refrain from disturbing the meeting, and that basically means no cheering, applause, or outbursts. Attendees will not be permitted to interrupt the business of the board. We ask that there's no profanity, foul language, or foul language. This is a public meeting. We follow robust rules of order. We expect that the meeting will be respectful. No waving of signs, flyers, or posters. I've already covered the handout process. And if you would like to review further our board policy, you can look at our board, at board policy, dialogue number 9323. So with that, I would like to invite. We first, we have a first person is online. Mr., I think it's Louis Valesko via phone. Mr. Valesko, star six to unmute.
Hello, everyone. Just want to confirm that I'm coming through clearly.
You are. Yes. State your name, please, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Louis Velasco. I am a prior ASD employee and worked for the Communications, Publications, and External Affairs Department from September 2020 to November 2021, before leaving the district for a new job opportunity. It still remains one of my favorite jobs that I've had, and I loved my time with the district. For those unaware, the ASD Communications Department is the department that handles the district's social media, emergency weather closure, closure notifications, news media relations, internal, external newsletters, and many other district-level communications for parents, staff, and the public. It may be biased, but it's an important department with a very important mission. And I share this info with school board members and any attending ASD staff and the public to understand my background and how that relates to why I'm speaking today, which is regarding the, to me, eyebrow-raising decision to hire Mayor Bronson's spokespeople, the communications director Corey Allen Young, and Mayor Bronson's deputy communications director Hans Rodvik for two ASD communications positions. As many folks in the room probably know, ASD is one of the largest employers in the state of Alaska with almost 6,000 staff, and over 42,000 students and families call ASD their home. A trusted communications team that staffs, families, students, and the community depend on because their work is crucial every day. Sadly, these two new hires in their history of service in the Bronson administration do not seem to exemplify the very best attribute that someone working in public service communications should have. Maximum transparency with minimal delay. ASD has faced many difficult news stories the last few years. Bus route cancellations and driver shortages, at-home learning woes, school closures, declining enrollment, budget issues, extended school days due to weather closures, and much, much more. While it's only anecdotal, ASD may be only second to the Bronson administration for negative news stories. And on the surface, it's why these hires make sense. The news cycle that in the future may include many more negative news stories about staff reductions because of the BSA issue at the state legislature. So what better way to protect the ASD brand than to hire two people who will insulate the district and minimize media engagement? I sincerely hope that reporters at ADN, K2U, Alaska Beacon, and others do not see an increase in publishing decline to comment with not a
Thank you, Mr. Valesko. Your time is up. If you would like to submit written If you would like to submit written the rest of your comments in writing, that would be appropriate. Thank you. Next, online, we have Stephanie Evans. Stephanie, star six to unmute.
Hi, this is Stephanie McFadden Evans. Dear school board members and chairs, thanks for providing me the opportunity to testify today. Let me start by saying I have a student athlete, and the call to action that I am presenting to the board is felt by not just parents of athletes, but parents throughout the district. I have attended many sporting events in the district, and I cringe every time knowing by the end of the year I have spent over $350 just to attend, not including the school sports registration fees I have to pay because my daughter plays volleyball. But my biggest cringe is when I attend away games in South Anchorage where the seats are packed with spectators. And when I go to the east side, there are very few spectators. When I ask the players, why your family or friends did not attend to see you play? They always say it's too high, it's too expensive, so they have to select what games they can attend. If I see this, I know everyone on this call season. Whoever attends any sporting event in Anchorage knows this is the case, but the greed has outweighed the district looking at ways to make high school games affordable for everybody to attend. When I was in high school, my parents never worried where I was during sport season. We were all in the gym or under the Friday night light. We had a safe space. No parent had an officer knock on the door and say, your son and daughter was killed at the football game, or we found your son slumped over from the overdose at a softball game, or your daughter was in a fight at the volleyball game in the ICU. See, those have never been our shoes because we had a safe place with sports. I know the high ticket prices are a revenue stream for the district, but shame on the district to prioritize money over young lives. I know most of the people making decisions at the district cannot wrap their heads around this message or are saying there is no correlation. That is because they have not or have forgot they walked in the shoes that need a safe space that goes beyond the school day. The sports that I attend have a high percentage of minority and low-income kids that are giving their blood sweaten here, or have an empty gym or field during their home games because their families have been priced out of seeing their own kids play a sport, which, by the way, might be their only opportunity to go to college. My ask is for the school board to ask the district to lower the cost of admission for all Anchorage sporting events. And I want everyone to think about a state in the Doc Rivers sand. We keep loving this country, but this country doesn't love us back. Our kids give everything to their school sport, and the district cannot give the families a chance to see their kids play. Board, thank you for your time.
And thank you very much. That concludes those who have signed up to speak. And there will be, if there is any other written public comment, it will be available attached to the agenda. Moving on to item E on our on our agenda, which is our consent agenda.
Madam President, absent any board members wishing to pull an item, I move to approve the consent agenda as written. Second.
Moved in second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any board member wishing to pull anything before we proceed? Seeing none? Since we will have to do a voice vote because Member Donley is not in the room.
Member Higgins?
Member Higgins, approve, we're approving the agenda. The consent agenda, sorry. He said yes.
All right. Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Star six to unmute, Member Donley. Approving the consent agenda.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes. All right, that motion passes unanimously. The consent agenda is approved as presented. We have no action items for this evening. That's item F. Item G is our non-action items. Does anyone want to pull anything from the non-action item agenda? Member Lessons?
I just have maybe a point of order. Have we decided how we're dealing with the item with respect to the teacher training?
We have not. That item needs to be pulled.
So I'd like to pull memorandum, please.
Yes, we're pulling memorandum number 012. Is that correct, Member Lessons? For discussion. Okay. So that will go, that item, we're just pulling it for discussion. Okay, the remaining items. Is there any opposition to approving items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5? We're not. Okay, it's not. Oh, thank you. Thank you, thank you. All right, Member Lessons, would you like to speak to? Item six.
Sure. During our work session, we had a really excellent conversation about the proposed budget revision changes for FY '24. And one item that arose during that conversation was that there is a line item for $805,000 that the board needs to approve prior to an August 15 meeting. And so the question is, what's the best path forward? Are we bifurcating this? And if so, I would be welcome, I'd be happy to hear another board member's official, which we're doing so.
Thank you. Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So in doing some research during our work session, I think the path that we handled some of our capital funding last year might work in that we had a memo, we bifurcated it, we took action that night, and then the rest of the memo carried on to our next meeting. So if we held a special meeting sometime before the funds were required to be approved, so early next week, I think, we could move to bifurcate, approve the portion that pertained to continuing education, and then the rest would go for a meeting later this month, I think on the 15th. And so that's what I would propose. And we were clear with administration now that that's what the plan was. They could be ready with, you know, an abrupt version of that document that just contained the one expense.
Okay, so if I'm if I'm hearing you correctly, Member Jacobs, you, your your motion, or is that a recommendation?
We might recommend. I don't think we need to make a motion.
Yeah, we just need to.
Special meeting with the one budget amendments memorandum that we would then move to bifurcate in our special meeting. We would only address the portion that pertains to funding required for continuing education, and the rest of it would go towards our next regular business meeting.
Okay, all right. So Dr. Bryant, can the administration separate out that piece, that line item for the training?
Yes.
Specifically for literacy.
Yes, Madam President, we can pull that so that the board is only discussing the training that will take place before the start of school.
All right. Okay, thank you. Yes, Member Lessons.
I just wanted to ask maybe a lead on the administration a little bit right now. I mean, the Alaska REEDS Act is a new law that just went into effect. Its implementation is really important, but bound to be challenging. Could you just speak to the value that the administration sees in bringing our K through 3K teachers back for for training with a new curriculum? For those who may be watching and trying to understand why this is important?
Sure, I'd be happy to address that. So for the community's awareness, ASD applied for and received a large grant from DED to implement a new curriculum that is in line with the requirements of the REEDS Act. So this coming year, we'll be implementing a new K-3 curriculum for our teachers. However, that's a huge lift, so that was the impetus behind some of the things, such as professional learning communities for elementary teachers. But another piece will be before schools start, it's important for teachers to have time to digest all those new materials so that way we can implement the new curriculum without a hitch. We think it's a great investment to ensure that our teachers feel comfortable on day one of school to implement that curriculum so we can meet our goals and guardrails on reading proficiency.
I just have maybe a technical question. I vaguely recall that the prior curriculum maybe showed up the day before school started, five, six years ago. Has the CK, have the CKALA materials landed in Alaska? Are they here? Are they being delivered to schools? Are they ready?
Yes, we have the curriculum. They're ready for staff. We're excited that there were no hiccups with the shipping.
Now, that's some pretty good movement there. That's good news. All right. Other questions on on memorandum 12? So the superintendent will will separate that line item out, and I will communicate to the board the date and time and place of our special meeting to deal with that memo. It will all depend on how much public notice we need to give. I'm thinking 24 hours, but maybe, is it 24 hours? So if it's 24 hours, we should be able to, I wonder if we can do it at the end of one of our meetings on Thursday. End of communications meeting on Thursday. So temporarily, that will be the temporary plan. If that does not work out time-wise, I'll let you know. All right. There we see it, too. Okay? We're going to do it after communications. Okay, yes.
I have one other question, and this is maybe related to this memorandum, but also to the $30 increase to the BSA that was implemented this year, separate from the one-time funding. Does the math add up? Does that $30 increase pay for the cost of implementing the Alaska REEDS Act in ASD? $10 per student. I mean, I didn't ask anybody ahead of time.
Thank you through the President to Member Lessons. I'll ask our chief financial officer to address that.
Thank you. As I recall, I think the $30 BSA generated about $2.2 million in additional revenue. But of course, you know, we've had inflation over that time, too, so it all just goes into the pot of revenue at that point. And we're having, we have 2.8 million here. There's going to be some ongoing costs as well.
So that amount was included in our presentation of numbers this afternoon?
The $30 BSA increase was included in the original budget in the fall, or in the winter.
But but the scale essentially doesn't cover the cost of implementing the program. And that's separate from the purchase of the curriculum, which was funded by a grant.
Which is also separate from the training that we have to do for ourselves.
Okay, so it's expensive.
It is expensive. Good point. Absolutely agree. All right. Other questions before we move on? All right, so the other items will come before you at our next meeting, which is the 15th, by the way. Let's see, moving on, we have, we're now, we don't have any other, any other public comment. So we are now at I, Superintendent's Update.
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening, ASD board and community. It really is great to be back to kick off the '23-'24 school year. This summer has been all about planning for upcoming major initiatives, such as launching our new K-3 curriculum and launching professional learning communities district-wide. So to recap you, last week, we kicked off the year with our principals at our annual two-day leadership development in service. And one of the things that I shared with the principals that I'll share with you as well is that as a district, we need to pivot our focus to our reading, math, and college career and life readiness goals. And all of our resources and priorities need to be in alignment with that. Everything else is extra. Last year was challenging. We had a number of crises, everything from transportation to a very difficult budget development conversation, apocalypse, and then some. And while those are important, operational crises can distract everyone, myself included, from the goals. However, I want to just make sure the community understands that school systems exist for one thing and one thing only, and that's to improve student outcomes. So I want to model that for the entire organization and make sure that we're rolling up our sleeves, but to tackle a new crisis, which I would say is education. So education is the only crisis that I want us focusing on because we have a long ways to go when it comes to meeting our ambitious goals and guardrails. So that's what matters. That's what we talked about. The theme of the day was "It's Us and It's Now", and that's because it was the people in the room, the principals, the assistant principals, and my leadership team are the ones who need to get these bold goals accomplished. And that's why our resources and things that we'll be talking about will start aligning to those goals and guardrails more consistently. So I'll be policing myself on that. So what does that look like to really buckle down on the goals and guardrails? So right now, we're focusing on what we call the the big six, which are really the big six pillars that our entire staff needs to have the eye on and investing resources towards. One is the ELA curriculum. That's directly aligned to our K-3 goals around reading proficiency. Professional learning communities, that one was really important to me because previously, professional development for teachers was somewhat of an event. It was a day on the calendar, but we're really hammering down and making sure that teachers every week have the opportunity to look at data, have collaborative conversations with their peers, and really hone their craft. Every single week, we're adding dozens of additional hours for teachers to really focus on what it's going to take to help their students meet the goals. The other one would be the rollout of our positive behavior interventions and supports at an initial set of schools, and we hope to grow that out in the coming years. Another one would be the strategic planning for the big things, not this school year, but the next school year. So those would be our sixth grade to middle school change, essentially moving all of our sixth graders in the district to a middle school building, and our school start times, which will literally impact everyone in this community in some way, shape, or form. We need to have our eyes on that so it goes off without a hitch in the next school year. And then, of course, this is year one of our five-year strategic plan to roll out academies at all of our high schools, which will align our programming to high-wage, high-demand careers right here in Anchorage, in addition to opportunities to consider post-secondary education, if that is what our families and students desire for themselves. And then, while not technically part of the big six, the other thing is we're making steady progress towards our system's accreditation through Cognia so that all of our schools are accredited, not just our high schools, and that will allow us to align our resources and strategic planning aggressively towards those goals and guardrails. So those are the main things, and everything else needs to be in support of that. And lastly, I did promise to give regular updates on student transportation, and at this point, things are looking good. We don't have any reason to believe that we'll need to suspend or alter student transportation services this year. So we're extremely appreciative of our bus drivers for choosing Team ASD. And tomorrow, the administration will be thanking them in person at a bus driver appreciation event. Now, that said, if the outlook changes, we'll keep the community aware. But it does appear that competitive wages and summer employment were effective strategies to mitigate another crisis. So I want to thank the team for making that happen and really thank our bus drivers for being some of the first people that our students see when they start their day. We're very grateful to have them on our team. And those are all of my updates for tonight.
All right. Thank you very much. Questions for the superintendent? I mean, I love the the theme for this year's Leadership Academy, "It's Us, It's Now." Really, really, that's a sense of urgency there, and I really can appreciate that. I really like that. So not seeing any, not seeing or hearing any questions. You guys are mighty quiet tonight. I better make, I'm gonna write this down because you guys are not, I can hold up. Okay, thank you, Dr. Bryant. Item, we're moving on now to item J, School Board and Administration Comments and Community Outreach. I do want to remind, I think, I don't know that every community council is meeting during July or August, but you can certainly be ready to kick off with community councils in September. But please double-check your, some are having, some are meeting, but not very off, but but not, but most are not. So double-check your list. Oh, and Amanda shared that she is going to be getting calendar invites out to everyone. But not everybody has their schedule listed yet, so keep an eye out for that. All right, so let's start with our school board comments. Who wants to go first? Now, y'all are really too quiet now. I mean, really. All right. All right, Dora, please help us. Help us.
So in this past month, I have spent time at North Star Elementary, Save High School during their summer school program, the Back on Track Summer School Program, Migrant Ed Summer School Program, Child in Transition Summer School Program. I attended the summer school graduation at East High and have had lots of conversations about and have had lots of conversations about our college career and life readiness work. And, and I look forward to visiting more schools, talking to more people. The CCL work is, is something near and dear to me, so very excited about that. Also, I wanted to just report and, and show some appreciation for our sponsors for the Backpack Jam that was held on July 22nd at the Ed Center, supplied over 3,000 backpacks with school supplies to ASD students. Amazing. And bear with me, I really think it's important to acknowledge the sponsors of that. The Alaska Club, Credit Union One, Anchorage Museum, N-Star Natural Gas, Kalati Brothers Coffee, Ohama Media Group, Anchorage Public Library, IBW Local 1547, Alaska Civic Patrol, vendors and volunteers, Anchorage Chamber of Commerce, UAA Bookstore, and the Boys and Girls Club. So thank you to all of those community partners that helped provide over 3,000 backpacks to our ASD students. Also wanted to point out that HUGS, which stands for Helping Us Give School Supplies, HUGS Backpack Giveaway will, will take place on August 9th, Wednesday, August 9th, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at East High School. So families that did not have the opportunity to attend the first Backpack Jam that ASD did this year, there is a second school supply opportunity for those families. So please, I'm, I'm, be happy to help get the word out, but I, I know ASD is doing a great job getting the word out. Also, the Back to School Campaign has kicked off last month. The main message has been enrollment and registration, as well as school start times for families. And for more information, you can check our Back to School webpage and explore our pathways to academic success for our students. And we will be discussing this and more on our, at our Thursday Communications Committee meeting. So please feel free to attend.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Let's just go right next to you there, Member Lessons.
Dora, that was amazing. Member Wilson, that was an amazing summer school attendance.
Busy Beaver.
Yeah, I'm impressed. I was just going to reflect on the consent agenda. You know, we don't talk about those items, but there's some really remarkable grants and partnerships that are entailed. It's exciting work to tackle problems like student engagement, chronic absenteeism. And I look forward to, you know, hearing good things from the way that those funds and partnerships are going to allow, allow real focus on student needs and student supports. Other items, again, in the consent agenda, you know, talk about building security, taking things away from what would otherwise be on the CIP. We had an amazing presentation this afternoon on our maintenance and operations and how much work goes into making our buildings safe, effective learning environments. So sometimes, you know, the weeds get covered up through the consent agenda, but they're really important. So I just wanted to acknowledge them. I wanted to say that we have a finance meeting at noon on Thursday. Bring a snack. We're meeting 11:12 at 1:00. And I will encourage board members to read, if you are able, the ISA report that is already on the Finance Committee Agenda. It's a recent report. And the researchers are coming to talk about teacher retention. This was something, they attended a Finance Committee in June of last year as they were embarking on their project. And so I think that'll be really useful. So see if you can read it ahead of time. And if nobody else is going to say it, I was dazzled that Dede just announced today that it's allocating $2 million in COVID relief funds to help pre-K through 12th grade teachers across the state obtain classroom resources. There's a collaboration with Dede and Donors Choose. And teachers can apply for up to $1,000 in project funding through, go to bit.ly/donorschooseak. And so I'm sure the Dede website has that, but that is really an amazing resource. So I thought I would give that a look. That's all.
Awesome. Thank you very much. All right, Member Holloman?
Just a reminder of the Governance Committee Meeting at 11:00 on Thursday. We are doing our periodic review of board policies, and we're looking at 400 and 500 numbers on Thursday. So I would urge you to read those in advance. And if you do have changes you want to make, if you will email Ms. Foster and myself, just so we have a heads up going into the meeting. I was at the Alaska Association of School Board, Board Meeting last month, and a lot of